Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you to the May 2nd, 2011 Morganton City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And before I move to Sheldon Stevenson with our invocation, I want to say a few words. One is that a great thing happened 24, over 24 hours ago, Osama bin Laden. Of course, everybody's been glued to the tube as well as they could be if those stayed home, because it's a great thing that happened in our world to get rid of a monster and to somewhat allow people, September 11th, the coal bombing of the ship, and then September 11th, and all of our young men who've lost their li, young men and women who've lost their lives overseas, fighting wars that for some reason Osama, his name is tagged to it, and we're almost glad it's over, but we still have to remain vigilant because we never know what's going to happen. And I'm sure our country will be, as well as our foreign neighbors, people all over the world are talking about it. But one of the major things, I think, in this country is the devastation that happened in North Carolina with the tornadoes a few weeks ago. And then last week, tornado was around the 17th of April, I believe, in North Carolina, where 100 and some odd people lost their lives. But 342 people died last week, over seven states, 250 people alone in Alabama. Tremendously tragic, tragic form of weather. And I won't, hopefully, we will always remember those people who are in distress. And there is a great fortune when I, when I heard about it and watched it on television that, you know, you wonder what I, as a person, can do to help them. But the mayor of Tuscaloosa said that they have a world of volunteers and, because, you know, it swept through certain part of town, and a certain part of town is devastated and blown away, and towns in Alabama and Mississippi, just completely, the downtowns are wiped, wiped out. So that's devastating. And I've asked Steve to, in his prayers, to allow us to pray for all of the people in those states, seven states to be exact. And at this point, there's still people missing, but the death toll was 342, and it's somewhat lost strength due to the Osama bin Laden situation, and it really shouldn't have, because what's happening in America, to me, at this point, is far more important. Go ahead, Steve. Lead us with our invocation.
Well, when a report came in about the death of Osama bin Laden, I was glad for your leadership.
Thank you.
I mean, to have people leading us that want peace, want to bring love and care to the community is something that you folks do, and I really think it's so important. We're lucky, we really are lucky. And same thing with the beauty of the world, it seems to me, with all these things happening around and so on. I don't know why God lets us off, but I don't think I've ever seen a more beautiful city than Morganton this spring, with flowering trees and bushes and so on. They were just gorgeous, you know? And I think that our prayers ought to be prayers of, you know, praying for peace and thankfulness to God for the beauty of the world and so on, and our ability to be alive and be part of the growing beauty of the world, and I think that's important. I think we ought to be generous, too, when you think of the people in Japan, and these people here in our own country. We're part of that, you know? So that our life contributing to that. And I thank God every day. You've got people who don't remember that, but I'm a graduate of College of Forestry, and to see these beautiful trees, I thank God every day for them, so on. So I encourage you to pray for the peace of the world and for these people who are suffering now and so on, and to be thankful for the beauty of life that we experience. So may we pray. For the beauty of the earth, for the glory of the skies, for the love which from our birth, over and around us lies. Lord of all, to thee we raise, this our hymn of grateful praise. For the beauty of each hour of the day and of the night, hill and vale and tree and flower, sun and moon and stars of light. Lord of all, to thee we raise, this our prayer of grateful praise. For the joy of human love, brother, sister, parent, child, friends on earth and friends above, for all gentle thoughts and mild. Lord of all, to thee we raise, this our prayer of grateful praise. For thyself best gift divine to us so freely given, for that great, great love of thine, for peace on earth and joy in heaven. Lord of all, to thee we raise, this our prayer of grateful praise. Amen.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks for the kind words, and I think it's an appropriate time to tell Scott Luckadoo how much we appreciate the work they do in public works, making the town beautiful with the flowers that they plant.
But does he have any good or no?
Yeah, because our, our town is beautiful, no doubt about it. Introduction of our council, on my far right is Dr. Alfred Hamer, City Councilman, City Councilman Forrest Fleming, Steve Suttermeyer, City Attorney, I'm Mel Cohen, Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Manager, Larry Wisnant, City Councilman, John Cantrell, City Councilman, and Kelly Russell is our Recording Secretary, and Becky Brinkley, over, hidden over there, is interpreting for our deaf community. This is a very difficult time for me. Bill Wilson, would you come to the microphone? If anybody has to deal with Bill, you know what I'm talking about. But I'm going to present him with a 25-year pen that's like going on 65 years, you know? But Bill, we appreciate you. I make comments to friends that I take into, don't say anything, Bill, now, I'm being nice. I make comments to people when they come to town, and we show them, ride by karma or go in and look for fresco on the ceiling, is, I remember the day you came to work.
It's a mistake.
And I remember, I tell people that the building looks as good today as it did in 1985, and I mean it sincerely. Now, I feel like I've dealt with you for 65 years, but I want to present the pen to you. You're welcome to say anything, as long as it's only 30 seconds.
I have something for you, too, Mel, if you'll indulge me just a moment.
See, he knew I was going to say something.
Honey.
You know, it'd been nice to have a 25-year pen rather than a 10 and 15, but I understand we're kind of short right now.
Coming back, you know.
Mel, this is a device we've come up with. You know, there's a lot of problems in perception of the city employees. You've heard the old joke, there's one guy digging a hole and five leaning on a shovel.
I've heard that.
You've heard that.
I don't see it, but I've heard it.
We've solved the problem, and we want to present this to you. This is the KISS, the Kickstand Shovel, and as you can see, it's got a little kickstand on it.
Right.
And, I get it right, it's prototype, so it's not perfect yet. There you go. That's the Kickstand Shovel, and that's going to eliminate employees and expenses for the city from now on. You won't have to have people standing around, so that's all yours, Mel. I hope you enjoy it.
And you've said all you need to say, Bill.
Thanks.
Thank you, good night. There's Larry, Larry's here now. Martin's not here. Brian Steen is here with the Burke County Manager. We appreciate you being with us tonight. Pam Pickard is here. Pam, you wrote a distinguished, beautiful letter, and we greatly appreciate the kind words. Not everybody feels the way you do, and it's a shame, but you know, the ones I find that people move here tend to feel much better about the community than people like myself and many of the natives that are on the city council, and we appreciate those kind words. It makes us think a little harder and remember that it is a gorgeous town, like Sheldon Stevenson said. Thank you very much. Few other things I'll mention. TGIF starts this Friday night, concerts on the courthouse lawn, the old courthouse lawn, and they'll be this Friday night all the way through July. The Farmer's Market starts on May 14th, a week from this Saturday.
May 7th.
May 14th.
May 7th?
No, May 14th, if I'm not mistaken. I could be wrong, but I think it's May 14th, which is not this Saturday, but next Saturday, and it's the, Farmer's Market is near. You say it's the 7th?
I think it's the 7th. I'm pretty sure it's the 7th.
It is, okay, okay, all right. Then, and it's not the 14th, it's the 7th. And it's at the Depot. Also, would like to, there was one other item I wanted to mention. The deaf school will be having their art show beginning this Thursday, and it'll go on for several weeks, and it is in the building next to Carolina Properties on Main Street. It's actually East Union, and they have done a great job in there. Rudy Bell, who is so gracious enough to allow the deaf school, NCSD, to utilize that space. Sally, you got a?
Yeah, a couple of things. There are a couple of other things happening in the month of May. On May 14th, there's Art in the Park out at Catawba Meadows, and then on Saturday, May 21st, at Catawba Meadows also is Plow Day and Swap Meet. So there's all kinds of things going on in the month of May on weekends. The other thing I'd like to mention is recently Joshua Harris, our Public Information Officer, got the opportunity to meet with the Public Information Officers across North Carolina in an annual meeting that they do. And at that annual meeting, Joshua and his hard work at the city won three awards for the work that Joshua does in the PIO office for us. First place in communication technology, and that's in the website category, recognizing his efforts with our website and how much work has been done to bring that up into this century and to make that useful for everyone. Also, a first place in marketing tools, dealing with the branding, the new logo, and that deals with the Compass Cable logo, if I'm not mistaken. And then second place in printed publications, something that's almost a thing of the past, and that is for the Citizens Newsletter, the city pride that goes out six times a year. So we're going to congratulate Joshua.
Congratulations, Joshua. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, Power Agency?
Mm-hmm.
Dan Brown?
We have Dan tonight to come and talk to us about the RP3 Award.
The RP3 Award, which is Reliable Public Power, is given to municipalities who demonstrate excellence in the areas of system reliability, safety, and system improvements. This year, we scored in the top 80 of over 2,000 municipal systems nationwide. Outage time and response time is a big factor in this award. While no one can prevent all electric outages, we just saw about 1:30 this morning, we scored very high on minimizing the time that our customer citizens are without power. And we're very proud of that. And Brooks is here as well, and I wanted to show you this plaque, and this will go along with the two other awards we have received in the three years that we were eligible. We receive the award every year. So we're very proud of that, and we will hang that and demonstrate it in the electric department with the other two.
Very good. Congratulations, Dan, Brooks. Be sure to pass it on to all the guys. We greatly appreciate them working. The storms and trees falling, all the different problems that we have in a community, and we greatly appreciate their response time. Thank you. Consent agenda, Sally.
Okay, the consent agenda tonight consists of three individual items, and the staff considers those to be non-controversial, would ask that the council consider those in one motion, unless there is someone on the council or in the audience that would like an item removed and discussed separately. And for those of you viewing at home, those three items are approval of minutes from a regular meeting on April the 4th, tax releases in the amount of $543.92, and an agreement with the North Carolina DOT regarding a bridge construction on Hospital Drive. That's part of the work that they're doing down at the Exit 105 project, and it requires an agreement between us and DOT.
Move we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, have a motion second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. New business, public hearing.
Appearances.
I'm sorry. Yeah, Jim, I'm sorry. Come on up to the podium. Jim Powers, and state where you, your name and where you reside.
I'm Jim Powers, and I live at South Point on Lake James. I'm here to express my appreciation to the city council for their past actions against incorporation of the village of Lake James. Even though the council came out very strong and very clear, indicating that there was no intent to annex the lake, that's still a very common misconception up there. A number of the voters that voted to approve the village of Lake James will still tell you that's the reason they did it. And I was just here in hopes that the city council would take a public stand and maybe discuss the village, the problems with annexation, the problems, the economic problems with annexation, you might incur, the problems of delivering services, the fact there was no intent ever. Even though this same group told the commission in Raleigh that that was never part of the rationale for the formation of this town, it was a very, very important part of gaining the support for their petition. So, of course, this has economic ramifications to Burke County, as well as to each of the municipalities in Burke County, if it does pass. It's currently in the House Government Committee in Raleigh. And just, just a effort like that to better educate the people of not only the proposed village of Lake James, but all of Burke County, may help clarify some of those issues. Not sure the best avenue, I assume the News Herald may be the best avenue for that, but I'd leave that up to the city council, and just, just request some effort in that, in that direction.
Jim, I don't see a News Herald reporter here. Oh, hey, okay, you're new.
Yeah.
That's fine, okay. Tell us your name.
Matthew.
Matthew, okay. Well, Matthew's here. I didn't see any face of anybody I recognized from the past. Jim, I can state to you unequivocally, there's no way, at no time, you know, people talked to us about it, but there's no way we can, we could have ever annexed the lake and the lake properties, probably because we did the water system up there and, and manage it for the county. Maybe that's where they got it from, but in no way could we do it, and it looks like after this legislature goes home this summer, there'll be no way anyway for anybody to do it. But financially, it would have been impossible financially, and I can tell you that nobody on this city council mentioned it. I think they anticipated it up there. I think that was a crutch, maybe, at a time, but anyway, that's coming from us.
Thank you so much.
But again, after this legislature finishes and goes home, there won't be anybody doing much.
Thank you so much for your past efforts and anything you can do in the future.
Anybody wanting to make a comment, council members, to Jim?
There's some issue about financial, they'll fluff off money from the city and the county.
Yeah.
Not entitled.
There's no question that the city will lose some sales tax. That's just a given.
The county and every incorporated municipality in the county will, basically, will be dividing up the same piece of pie in a different manner.
According to the Joint Commission's report to the General Assembly, there's a total of about $161,000 in sales and shared revenue that the county as a whole, including all the municipalities, will lose. Not sure how that's, I think y'all get 20% or something like that, whatever it is. It will impact everybody when we're cutting budgets and cutting services and looking ways to get revenue.
Jim, when I was president of the league, we, we started talking a lot about paper towns, and since then, of course, the legislatures have been, have frowned against paper towns. And basically, that's my interpretation of what's going on. I've heard that. I haven't talked about it, because we haven't had any need to talk about it in the last several, last 12 months. But you hear a lot of that in, from elected officials outside of the area, and paper town should not be something the legislature should do, and, but that's just our, my feeling.
This is a perfect example of one.
Yeah, I know it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Misty Humphries with BDI, Burke Development Incorporated.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We just wanted to give a quick update on economic development activities for Burke County, and I'll also save a few minutes to answer any questions that you may have. But what I'd like to do is just hit the key areas of our strategy and give your council an opportunity to hear some of the exciting things and great things that are going on in Burke County. New business recruitment, we are seeing quite a bit of activity, a lot of project activity, and the main drive for that right now are existing buildings. About 80% of the projects are requesting existing buildings, and we're seeing quite a bit of activity even here within the city limits of Morganton, and so we're very excited about that. We do have some buildings under option that are not formally announced, so we can't, we're not at liberty to speak those tonight, but we do look forward to bringing some good news to you in the future. Some other buildings that people are looking for currently are storage space, retail space, small space for some startup companies, startup businesses, as well as build-to-suit. So the build-to-suit is a little bit of a different direction there, because we are seeing some companies that are entertaining that idea of a build-to-suit or either a remodel, renovation of an existing building. So seeing a lot of great project activity and new business recruitment. Existing business visits and retention is going great. We're feeling a real strong pulse from our plant management teams outside of, of the businesses of just trying to keep their head above water the last several years on the economic roller coaster they've been on. We're feeling a real strong pulse from them right now, that the existing businesses are strong in Burke County and are continuing to see new growth and new sales. Got a few, quite a few expansion projects in the works right now with our existing companies, and so we're excited about that as well. One of the areas, I'll lead into this from existing business, one of the areas that our existing business continues to ask us as a team for Burke Development, our staff and our board, is to help with some of the workforce development issues. And so in May, May 26th, we're going to be doing a strategic meeting, and it's called Employment Fact and Fiction, and it's really the nuts and bolts of what does it take to get a job in Burke County, because we're talking to existing industries who say they have job openings, and then we meet with people who are seeking jobs, and they're, they're not matching up. And so this is sort of a matchmaker event. It's going to be job coaching, resume review, there will be interview coaching, there will be ways to use the networking that you have, social media to use to get a job, but we will have existing employers on hand at that meeting, because they're asking us, can they come to that specific meeting and actually see who is really willing and eager to go back to work? So we are excited about that event. It's going to be a Thursday evening from 5:30 to 8:30. We are hoping to have about 100 people attend that, and it's a community event. We've got volunteers from Employment Security Commission, Western Pea Moak Community College, Worksource West, as well as some others in the region. So really, a great opportunity for us to close the gap of those who are seeking employees and those who are actively seeking work. So anyone you know who is unemployed or underemployed, please give them that date, May 26th. It's going to be a very dynamic meeting, and actually, they'll leave there with an action plan of my next steps to take. And our goal for that meeting is to help people understand how to get their foot in the door for an interview for some of the open positions that we're seeing and are counting, hearing about, but people then come back and say, well, they say there are job openings, we're not sure exactly how to get our foot in the door. So be a real strategic meeting.
Will that be at the Foothills?
Foothill, thank you. Foothill's Higher Education Center, it'll start in the tiered classroom, which is 163, but then we'll have five breakout sessions, and the breakout sessions will be key areas of how do I, how do I strategically look for my next place of employment?
Just May 26th, from 5 to 8?
5:15 registration, it starts at 5:30. We have a keynote speaker, 5:30 to 6:30. Local employers will speak from 6:30 to 7:30, and then breakout sessions from 7:30 to 8:30.
Very good, Misty.
Got a lot of great door prizes that we're going to give out, so we're trying to really encourage people to attend, because we feel like it can, it can be that gap analysis between those local employers who are seeking some eager people in their place of work, as well as those who are eagerly seeking for work right now. So we're excited about it, and got a great community team leading that up. So we look forward to hosting that on May 26th, the Thursday evening. Small growth and retention, quickly, we did receive, this was in the, in the News Herald, so I'm sure you've heard about this, an Economic Innovation Grant, $75,000 to help on the small businesses here in Morganton Opportunity Threads. And we were one of, let's see, 102 applicants, 13 were funded. So we were one of 12% who were actually funded for projects, and we just see this as a creative and innovative way to sustain local business, but also this business is working with some of our larger industries in town to do some contract work for them. So we've been able to set up some of those meetings and really get opportunity threads in the door of some of our larger companies to extend their business, and they're hoping to have quite a few new hires with this grant. BOBO, the next BOBO meeting will be in Hildebrand. For those that don't know BOBO, that's Burke Entrepreneurs and Business Owners, and that event will be also on a Thursday, and I think the date is May 12th. And we rotate that around the county, just to give plenty of people opportunity to come, and I think that event starts at 5:30. Lastly, the Burke Business Park, the bids are presented to the board on Wednesday, and Red Rock is finalizing some of the details regarding the marketing of that park, but we're confident that that park is moving in the right direction. And that was quick. I talk fast, I apologize.
That's good, that's good.
Any questions?
Thank you, Misty. We appreciate it. Anybody have any questions of Misty?
The $75,000 grant, you mentioned a company?
Opportunity Threads, which is here in Morganton. They're a cut-and-sew, and they, they do, they have lots of clients here in the region, but also out of state. They've got clients in New York, they've got clients in other states, but they are a cut-and-sew operation, and it's employee-shared business, where the, it's, the employees actually own the business. So it's really a great model, and I think one of the main reasons that this project was, or this, this particular one was chosen, was because they're hoping this can be replicated across the state for worker-owned businesses.
You said cut-and-sew.
Fabric, taking the fabric and actually cut and sew a pattern, they make some dolls from, and that's really a green business as well. They're taking a lot of recycled products, but they do little puppets for like earth fairs and Whole Foods and businesses like that. They're taking recycled socks, they do sock puppets, but they're, they're taking goods that are green already, and then they're taking them and making them into a new product to sell. But they, they're only, it's, they don't have really anything that they make full-time, except for what the, what they get contracted out. So we're helping them get their foot in the door with other companies in the area that maybe have a need for that cut-and-sew activity in their business, so they can outsource instead of to China, to Opportunity Threads here in Morganton.
And they're going now? Are they working?
Yes, and in fact, yes, they've been up and running for two years now, and we're currently looking for new real estate. That was part of the grant that we wrote in, was to find bigger space to operate out of, because for, for them to expand and grow and add new machines and new people, they need extra space. So we're currently looking for real estate for that small business.
Misty, sometime in the near future, maybe you can book us to go over there, as a city council meet over there at 4 o'clock one afternoon and
That would be great.
Tour the, tour the business, it would be wonderful.
That would be great. I'd be happy to do that.
Love to do it, okay. Just let us know before a city council meeting or something like that.
Okay, happy to do that.
Okay, anything else?
Not for me. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Public hearing is open to consider a grant agreement for Ice River Springs Morganton LLC, Sally.
This is one of the projects that Misty referred to that, that we have been working on. Ice River Springs has, has been here since 2006, and at that time, the city and the county worked together to offer them an incentive and, and to encourage them to put their water bottling business here. They are now in the process of expanding that business and looking to add 12 additional jobs and approximately $7 million more dollars in investment in the, the plant. It's in the old Summitville tile plant. Tonight before you, we ask you to consider another economic development incentive for them for this expansion, and that would be three years, the, the amount of the incentive would be equivalent to three years' worth of taxes, 50% of three years' worth of taxes, on the new investment that would be made there. So that's kind of a moving number. That's how the formula is working, and if it were calculated on the $7 million and what we're looking at, that would be $16,000, well over $16,000 a year for the city, and a little over $18,000 a year for the county. Required for you to consider that to hold a public hearing. We'll let you know that the public hearing was advertised accordingly in the newspaper.
Very good. Anyone, I opened the public hearing up already. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please stand. for or against, please stand, come to the mic and state your name and where you reside. Close the public hearing, Council.
I'm making a motion to approve the grant agreement between Burke County, the City of Morganton, and Ice River Springs Water Company Incorporated, and our Ice River Springs Morganton LLC, and to authorize technical amendments, corrections, or changes in the agreement as reasonably required.
Second.
We have the motion. We have a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I had one question.
Okay.
Mail. Has the company met the previous provisions of, of the grant for the, for the past year?
Yes. And, and they have been getting economic development incentives relative to that. And that agreement like this one adjusts the amount of that down for, in a prorata basis on how they meet that.
Okay. So they're moving along with the grant and meeting all the provisions and that sort of thing?
Yes, they have been meeting enough of them to qualify for a portion of the incentives.
Yeah, I think they, the initial estimate was they, they would invest $12 million. I think they've invested a little over $10 million so far.
And, and their incentive is adjusted down based on that.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Next item is a public hearing to consider rezoning requests submitted by Dr. Mark McMahon to rezone approximately 1.25 acres of property located at 1022 and 1034 East Union Street from neighborhood business to general business. Sally, but I'm opening the public hearing.
Okay. You know that the East Union Street area at one point was a primary entrance into the city coming from the east. And over a period of years, that corridor has really been in a little bit of decline. And recently, over the last several years, there's been some investment in the area. And that's come in the way of a new church in the subdivision Henry's Glen, some other small investments in the area. Looking at this, the Mission 2030 Plan, the land development plan that, that we just completed, you know, encourages taking proactive steps to, to invest in, in this corridor and, and to get this transition area up to par. The Planning Commission has reviewed this and recommends unanimously that the request be approved. Was advertised in the News Herald for two consecutive weeks. First-class mail notices were provided for adjoining property owners. And the property was posted.
Okay. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? Now's the time. State your name and where you reside. Microphone. Wait a minute, you got, Mark, I'm sorry. I'll take that back.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, you've got a synopsis of what I had to say at the P and Z meeting. But, you know, if you've got any questions or you want me to go through that again, I'll be happy to.
Mark Combs, we talk about East Union. But now there are two or three residences on Valleys Avenue that are part of this request, correct?
They belong to me. One of them is currently leased as a commercial business. And I intend to protect that leasing, you know, at all possible costs. The other one is a residence. And I have that leased to a, actually to an employee. And he's kind of an on-the-site custodian. We've had some problems in that area. And I keep it patrolled pretty heavily. As a matter of fact, I give employees a fee to have cars towed. So we, we're real aggressive about making sure that we don't have problems there.
I might also add, I've talked to Dr. McMahon on two occasions about the development of the property. And he assures me that whatever development he's going to do will fit in with the neighborhood and not cause any distractions or noise or anything of that nature.
That, the, the particular piece of property has a, a great deal of history in my family. And I, no way I'd do anything to damage it. I feel like I'm an anchor there on the corner and have been for a long, long time.
Any questions of Dr.?
Yeah. Is, do you have any kind of plans for outside activities? Or do you have any plans for outside kennels or anything like that?
Do not have any, any inkling of expanding any outside facilities of that nature. No, absolutely not.
I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance rezoning approximately 1.25 acres of property located at 1022 and 1034 East Union Street from neighborhood business to general business.
Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing first. All right, go ahead. You made your motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have the second. Any discussion now? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Did y'all play a good game?
The rest of my thoughts.
That's good. That's good. Very good. Thank you. Next item is a public hearing. I'll open it up to consider the City of Morganton Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program Action Plan fiscal year 2011-12. Sally?
Okay. Lisa Helton is here, who is our consultant from the COG that helps us administer this grant. These are the federal dollars that we get through the entitlement program every year. And Lisa's here to talk about our, our plan and how we're gonna look toward using that. We did get less money this year.
We got about $27,000 less. We had a deduction.
One of the federal programs undergoing cuts.
This is our annual action plan. It tells us how we're going to use our entitlement funds each year. This public hearing is to receive input if anyone has any comments. This year, we will be receiving $134,043. We have a small business loan program that will receive $87,135. Grants to nonprofits, $20,100. Administration, $26,808. And those, you know, those are some, some things that we've been doing in the past, been very successful. So we hope to continue that this year.
Okay. Anyone in the audience would like to talk about it? I'll close the public hearing. Council?
I'm making a motion to approve the City of Morganton Community Development Block Grant, CDGBG, entitlement program action plan fiscal year 2011-12.
Second.
We have the motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Lisa, for coming.
She's not quite there.
Well, you got another one, that's right. Consideration of a project budget ordinance for 2011 CDGBG, Sally?
Yeah, this is a follow-up. I mean, there's a couple more actions involved in this. Once the plan is put into place, this is something that we do by budget, project ordinance. And so we need to adopt the budget. And what the budget does is set up the receipt of the $134,043, and then divides it up into three categories, the ones that Lisa just talked about. But we have to do that by motion.
I make a motion to approve the 2011 project budget ordinance.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of a contract with Western Piedmont Council of Government and the City of Morganton for the provisions of grant management services, Sally?
This is the agreement by which Western Piedmont loans us, Lisa, every week to administer this. And this sets up the contract that we will do that for. That also requires approval.
Who we approve the contract with Western Piedmont Council of Governments for grant management assistance with Morganton CDBG Grant Entitlement Program?
Second. Have a motion, second. Any discussion?
Yeah. I just wanted to ask, is, is this, this grant, is it so involved that, and takes so much time that the city wouldn't have, city employees wouldn't have time to, to administer that grant? Or is it more involved than what I know about?
We, we used to have a person on staff that, that did that for us. And we no longer have that person. And since that time, there are a lot of federal regulations, a lot of involvement back and forth with HUD, with the Greensboro Office and the DC Office. And, and we have, once we lost that person who'd had the training and what was required to do that, we have contracted with the COG since then. The administration piece is limited to 20% of, of the grant amount. And, and we have used the COG since we got rid of that person. And we didn't get rid of them, they left. And we didn't replace that person.
Okay. Oh, so we're gonna climb it now that it's such that we probably, the city probably wouldn't be able to afford to replace that person since we're
Oh, no, I don't think so.
Downscaling and that sort of stuff.
Yeah, it's, it's much more economical to pay the COG to, to do that than it is to have a person and associated benefits to do that, in, in my opinion. Not to mention the fact that we rely on them to have the knowledge and the training to keep up with all that and to work with the HUD auditors. Since this is a federal program, it not only gets audited by our auditors, the, the city's auditor, but by the HUD auditors and all of those people each year too. And we rely on them to do all of that for us.
Well, I ask a question because I think it's probably a lot of people, residents of Morganton that probably don't understand all that's involved in, in managing these grants and the amount of time and expertise involved in it. And by, by contracting this, then it appears that we're, we're saving ourselves some money as opposed to having a person hired to do so. So makes sense.
Any other question? We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Consideration of adoption of interconnection procedures, forms, and agreements developed by Electric Cities, Sally?
This is a, a program that, or some recommendations given to us by Electric Cities. And what it does is basically sets up and outlines the procedure of an agreement that would be between the City of Morganton and a customer that was installing any kind of photovoltaic and also the other contractor selling and installing the units. This outlines the agreement that would be between us and them in order for that to happen. Does comply with the North Carolina Utilities Commission and FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And Dan's here, Brooks is here. And they know a lot more about this than I do.
Over the past month, the electric department has had two requests from major industrial customers to install photovoltaic solar systems and connect to our electric grid. Brooks, Kirby, and I went to Electric Cities' training on these systems. And we will assist our customers in the event they wish to proceed with their installations. I do, I did bring Brooks along with me so you guys can put a, a face to a name. He will handle the technical and the metering aspects of these systems. If we do, I know, Mayor, one of the things that you're proud of is that Morganton is quite frequently on the cutting edge of new technology and things of this nature. I will let you know that if we do, if the customers do proceed with these two, it will be the two largest in the western part of the state. And also, it'll be the two largest ones that Electric Cities has as an entity.
That's great.
And we will have them both.
Public power customers.
Public power.
That's exciting.
So it is. And this agreement just protects us. It, very specific recommendations that a customer has to, to do so that they cannot, in the event of a power outage, fall back onto our grid and make it unsafe for our workers.
And you have a summary from Dan. The agreement we have is about this thick.
Well, and I will tell you, that's why I brought Brooks along. He has memorized every page.
There you go. And we opted to save some trees and not print multiple, multiple copies of that.
Yes, we did. Kelly was very good about that.
Dan, I'll tell you, I talked to Brooks this morning at 7:00 AM when I got a call from a citizen over on Woodbine Terrace. And he was very courteous to me and called the individual. And I greatly appreciate that. And he was extremely courteous. Thank you, Brooks, for what you did this morning and the guys that were out on the, out in the field. Okay. I make a motion to approve Electric Cities' interconnection procedures, forms, and agreements.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Consideration of, of resolution for, wait a minute.
Filing fee.
Yeah, filing fee. Consideration of filing fees for municipal elections, Sally.
Okay.
Or Steve, either one.
Yeah. Steve is gonna talk about these.
Well, normally, we'd be taking a lot of action concerning the appointment of Board of Elections and all of that. We don't have to do that this year now. But we still have, but the council still has to set the filing fee. The election will be in October. It's Council District 1 and 2. That's Larry's district and, and Forrest's district, plus the mayor. And you, you need to set the filing fee. And we, I'll advise the County Board of Elections. And they will collect the fee at the time filing. Filing opens a little later this year than it has in times past. In times past, filing for the city offices has been the, essentially, the first two weeks of July. And because of the
Census.
The census, there's, in 2009, the legislature delayed the filing after a decennial census till the end of July and the first week in August.
And you've got, it doesn't make any difference in our agenda. But if someone got the agenda October 4th election, but it is actually October 11.
Okay, okay.
Because that's because of the census also.
Yep.
Actually, it is. It would normally have been the 4th.
Yep. And I put the wrong date in there. That's, that's correct.
Okay. I think we're all gonna be generally pretty much in agreement on the $200 for the mayor and
That's right.
And $20 for the council.
I think the 5 is a better figure.
500 for you and 5 for us.
Yeah. Okay. Whatever you want, guys.
I'll make the motion to set the filing fee for office of mayor of $20, and the filing fee for each of the council districts at $20.
Second.
If we have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Consideration of a primary public safety answering points in Burke County. That's PSAP.
And, and you guys have attended a workshop briefing that, that we had on this at the Foothills, Foothill Center several weeks back. A PSAP is the first point of reception by a public safety agency for an emergency call, a 911 call in Burke County. We have three. And those include Burke County, the City of Morganton, and the town of Valleys. And funding for PSAPs heretofore has come from the North Carolina 9/11, 911 Board, and comes from the charge that you have on your phone bill for that. Recently, they are looking at changing their rules and their regulations and how they fund. They are looking to encourage counties, and in some cases, maybe even multiple counties, to consolidate those PSAPs and to look at doing those in a joint operation. We have been looking at that. The Burke County Homeland Security Task Force is a group that has representation from the municipalities, from emergency management, from the county, from a bunch of other things too, like Broughton and Hospital. And I may have missed several others. That group has taken the lead in trying to pursue this and looking at opportunities for how we might be able to do this. Currently, there is a open window to apply for some grant funding that could possibly help with this. And you'll know this is one of the consolidations, probably the first significant consolidation that we're talking with, with Burke County and other municipalities, and looking at how we can combine some services. And what we need to ask tonight, if you are in favor of us moving forward and seeking grant funds to, to continue moving toward this, is to do a resolution that would support the grant. We'll tell you that Burke County will be the host applicant for the grant. And I actually had discussions about this today with the county manager.
I'm going to adopt the resolution supporting the application for a grant from the North Carolina 911 Board.
Second. Have a motion, second. And I'll tell you, Chief, and Major, you might want to, I don't know, the public really understands what we're involved in when we, when we are hiring the dispatchers today, and what the future will hold for dispatchers. But the education level, training level, dollars and cents, in other words, it's, it's a whole new ballgame. And the public's not aware of what's going on. But it's gonna happen all over the country, I would imagine, not just North Carolina. Chief?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. There, there are many components to this, these mandates and this, some of its legislation and mandates. And it comes about at a difficult time for all of us. But yet, even though it's a bit of a movie And it comes about at a difficult time for all of us, but yet, uh, even though it's a bit of a moving target, there are some finite standards to which we will all be held. So, we feel like we're positioned to get into this very early and hopefully be the recipient of some of this grant money, which is uh, the, the opportunity, the timing is right, in other words. And so, given the mandates, given our situations in terms of uh, our infrastructure, by all means, please understand we do not have to accept the grant. Even if we should be awarded the grant, should there be some drawback to it, we, we have to work out the fine details and the small print. But we do feel like it, given the opportunity and given our current position, we at, at least need to move forward and explore this further. We have to have this resolution, as do all the other entities involved, Burke County, the town of Valdez, and all of us are doing this. For example, town of Valdez is doing it tonight, as, and Burke County Commissioners will be acting on this resolution tomorrow night as well. But we all have to be in unison in moving forward on this.
You know, you say mandates, but uh, we, about ten years ago, we started calling them unfunded mandates, even though there is grant money out there.
Sir.
And this is something that uh, catches you with the britches down because it could cost a fortune. Uh, city, county and uh, Morganton, Valdez and, and Burke County could cost a lot of money.
Sir.
Uh, thank you for uh, having it put before us, appreciate it very much. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of resurfacing bids for twenty eleven, Sally.
Um, we received resurfacing bids on Tuesday, April the twenty-sixth. Uh, received five paving contractors that submit, five paving contractors submitted bids. The lowest responsible bidder is Maymeed Incorporated of Mountain City, Tennessee. Um, recommend that you award a bid to them in the amount of one hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred and one dollars. We had a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in the budget, so somebody's gonna have to cough up the other two hundred and one dollars. And we'll actually take that from another line item. The streets are, the list of streets this year, you know, in times past, we've looked at, you know, fifteen, sixteen streets and we've done portions of those. You have two streets before you in this contract, and that is part of Stone Bridge and Buchell Street. And you have a map included
Yep.
in your information, if you have any questions, Lee's here and could answer that. Feel like with the work going on at exit one oh five and how traffic is gonna be rerouted during some of that, um, that Stone Bridge is very important to, to get done, to be able to accommodate some of that.
Aye.
I- in times past, we have, um, when we have done this, we have looked at trying to do two years. We've actually asked them to bid on two years and, and, and done two contracts, if you will. One in the spring in this budget year and one in the next budget year, uh, with the price of fuel and the variables in that. We did not think that was a good idea to do that this year.
Our park drive's in this too, is it not?
Little portion.
A little tiny, tiny, tiny piece.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to authorize a contract with Maymeed Incorporated of Mountain City, Tennessee for the twenty-eleven Powell Bill resurfacing of city streets here in Morganton and to extend the contract to include twenty-twelve Powell Bill resurfaces, resurfacing using the same unit cost to resurface as many qualified streets as possible within the budgeted amount.
Aye.
Okay, well, motion second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, consideration of a policy to allow approved recreational concessionaires to operate within Catawba Meadows Park, Sally.
Um, city of Morganton has been approached by various businesses, entrepreneurs, folks looking at opportunities to start new businesses. Uh, the group that Misty referred to earlier, the Bebo Group, the Burke Entrepreneur Business Organization, have had some folks who have been members and participating in that, interested in this. That group, the VDEC, which is the Valdez Economic Development Incentive Corporation that um, Councilman Fleming sits on, and the Burke County Travel and Tourism Development Authority have all been looking at ways to provide some resources to try to help folks with small businesses that are centering around recreational opportunities and things that fit in with the community. And one of the sites that folks have expressed some interest in is the Catawba Meadows Park because of some natural fits and types of businesses that could work out of that. You, you know, we currently have the Beanstalk Journey operating out of there in a similar situation. And hopefully in the future, we're gonna have the national headquarters for the OVTA that'll operate as a part of Catawba Meadows Park, or at least adjacent to. And the Gerora Foundation has talked with us and looking at using part of the facility down there for an interpretive center. The policy would be intended to, you know, help establish a way that staff could work with folks toward accomplishing them having some short-term type leases to operate there.
Where would these be?
And Lee is here to answer any detailed questions, if anything that you may have.
Lee, you might wanna go to the mic. Uh, what'd you say, Alfred?
Where, where will these concessions be?
Uh, there is vacant space in some of the existing buildings at Catawba Meadows. Uh, other businesses would operate perhaps on the grounds, uh, out of, out of the, one of the parking lots or out of, under a tent during certain hours of the day or, or during certain months of the year.
Lee, are you gonna base the rent on square footage that they get, or, or you, you gonna allocate petition off and then allocate rent then?
Uh, depends on what they're asking for, I think. Uh, each, each lease agreement would be its own independent request, based on the amount of space that they're asking for, the time, the hours, amount of energy usage.
Covering utility costs.
Those, those type of things would take into consideration, it's kind of a case-by-case request. The, the couple that's asked, uh, so far wants internal office space, uh, and place where they can have a point of sales uh, for that experience. That, if, there are outfitter-type businesses, excursion-type businesses, uh, that are recreational-oriented. Uh, it could happen within the park, it could happen outside the park.
The activity.
Yeah.
The activity itself.
Okay, who would, um, do the management of the spaces?
Uh, that would be through the Recreation Department.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I talked to Gary just before the meeting tonight, he couldn't come because he's manning the recreation center cause I don't have anybody else to do it tonight, so he's it.
Who, um, the term will be twelve months or less, right? Twelve months?
Right, I think the policy
Yeah.
uh, opens the door to additional length of leases with approval through the city council. But typically, these are year-to-year type arrangements to, uh, for different businesses.
Okay, if it's Sally, year-to-year, can it be one year with an option?
No. No, it's a year, at, at this point.
For computing the term of a lease, uh, we're bound by law that says you have to add in all options, renewal periods or extensions.
Gotcha.
So if it's, if it's a year plus an option to renew, then that's a two-year lease, would have to come to the city council. Sally cannot do that. It, it operates same way as, as the park uptown does.
Right.
Some of these businesses may seek a longer lease if they have to make a financial investment to improve their space or to make specific improvements within our facility that they need to operate that business. For example, maybe a new canoe launch or, or a storage building of some type, that would be a leasehold-type improvement. Um, so those are the kind of businesses that will probably ask for additional time on their lease.
And then have to have a business plan, I mean, we'd have to have, you know, some substantial information to look at, I think, to consider that. You know, we currently, we lease a piece of property to the Catawba Valley Baptist Association that they use on a year-to-year basis. It's not guaranteed to them after that, th- this will work very much the same as that at this point.
Who will make the decision on the people that want a lease from us?
Uh, I think the city manager is giving that final authority. I mean, we'll give recommendations, uh,
When you say we-
Recreation Department and the Planning Department. The staff will review each of the requests and then send it up to city, to the city manager's office for final determination, if it's a nu- if it's a year lease.
And even on a one-year, where one-year lease that, that's a new one, we, we would always report that at, at a minimum to the finance committee just so that we know what kind of things are being considered. Cause I mean, I think that's important, cause you certainly don't wanna do anything to detract from what you're trying to create at the park or to, you know, create a situation where you get stuck in something that's not good for the park.
If you think about it, there's a couple of different kinds of, of concessionaires that could be at the park. One is, uh, for example, with the Red, White and Bluegrass Festival, somebody's going to be in there for four, three, four days, five days. Those, uh, Gary's going to handle those like he always handles them, although they're subject to this policy. Uh, but, but primarily, this policy is not designed but on a per-vent, event kind of operation. Somebody's just gonna be there for a day and move on. This is for someone who's looking for some space or looking, uh, for some continuity, such as they want rec- uh, uh, concession for something all summer.
Yeah.
Uh, something like that.
Not just special events.
Not just a special event.
Obviously concessions not meaning food.
No.
A service.
This is actually limited to recreational activities. It, it ought to be limited to those activities that we could do a- as a part of our Recreation Department. My best example, Lee and I've talked about it, is we can't put a grocery store down there. That's not a recreational activity. You just can't put a grocery store on our public property.
Would you compete with, uh, Gary's store, uh, down there selling?
Well, he, Gary doesn't have a store down there now.
He doesn't have a store.
But, uh, uh,
The, the policy says it's a recreational service-oriented business. If there are some incidental items that are sold directly related to that, uh, for example, a, uh, canoeing-type business that was given canoe excursions or hiking trips, they could offer some, some equipment and things that would be related directly to that activity, but nothing beyond that.
Okay.
And also sets up in there, whi- which the director of Parks and Recreation and, and the park manager and that kind of thing would, would have to do too. If there's a special event being conducted, i- it allows for, for handling of that. The, the Red, White and Bluegrass Festival, a, a baseball tournament, uh, some other type of, of festival or weekend special event. If that's going on and, and, and something related to, to this business would not work with that, then they can discontinue those hours of operation. It allows for some joint use if, if there should be.
What you're saying is if a, if a person managing the tournament is selling items, and they do that from town to town, right?
They do, you have set up in your schedule of fees and charges. If a, if a person is, is, is having, if they've contracted with recreation to host a tournament this next weekend and they want to sell hats, baseball gloves, baseball bats, or whatever relative to that, then they pay a concession fee in order to be able to do that at that tournament, you have that set up. And it's only for the duration of that event and relative to that event.
But the person in one of the stores could actually be competing, right?
No.
Gary would, would restrict that because he can't attract the event
Correct.
if we've got an onsite competitor of theirs.
That's what this is for, in other words, if I'm coming in and doing a weekend tournament and I've paid my concession fee to do this, then if they're both selling baseball gloves, um, which is probably fairly unlikely, okay? But if they're selling baseball gloves, then this person would be restricted to not do that during the special event because they didn't rent the park for the purpose of the special event. Tho- those are my words, I don't, it's my interpretation.
So you're saying there's not gonna be any competition with any of the city's recreation activities? The, these businesses, Lee, are not gonna be in competition with any of the city's recreation?
Yeah, I don't think that's the intent, is to compete with city recreation. I think it's to offer things that are beyond what we would typically provide, uh, as far as type of services for the public. It's something that would, that the public would perhaps want, but won't pay a, a, you know, a fee for that we may not be able to provide.
It may be something that could be complimentary for folks participating in city events down there, you know? If they're gonna be here for two or three days on a weekend tournament and they have an afternoon and they might like to take a canoe trip or something, making this-
But not in competition with any, any other activities that's scheduled by, that Gary would schedule or
Right.
or the rec would schedule.
Yeah, we wouldn't wanna compete against something else that we're doing directly down there. A- as far as competition though, the, the policy does, uh, state that if a business does make a proposal to, to operate out of the park, that there'll be an advertisement, uh, made to see if there are other folks in the community that want to operate a similar business so that we can compare, so that we don't leave somebody out. We give everybody an equal opportunity that, okay, there's, there's somebody proposing this type of service business down there. And, uh, if, if you're interested in doing something of that nature, you know, this is what you need to do. Submit, and, and it would be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, which one would be the stronger use, that's the one we would want down there.
Okay.
That's kind of what the policy's saying in a nutshell.
Lee, I wanna bring up Gerora and, uh, let you explain it to us a little bit. It's important to our county, much like, uh, the, uh, things that we're trying to draw for travel and tourism here. Uh, tell me, they're interested in a space already and have talked to you and Gary or you?
Yes, in fact, it's been before you folks.
You've approved an agreement.
Okay, you have approved-
But they, there's a, there's a lease agreement that's been signed by the city council, been approved. It has not been signed yet by Gerora.
December.
That was, uh, considered back last fall.
December, I think we did it in December.
Yeah, it's, it was back in two thousand and ten. Uh, Gerora, I think, still has full intentions based on my last conversations with their president, uh, Mr. Ron Martin and some of the other folks that are with that organization. And I think they, they've run into some fundraising efforts to try to, they gotta do some bathroom renovations and other things in the building. And so, uh, those negotiations are continuing and they're trying to figure out what their timing's gonna be. They don't wanna sign that lease until they have funding available to, to make the lit, the, the monthly lease payments. Uh, I think some of the spaces we've identified are some of the area that may in the future be used by Gerora. Uh, we would ask that they give us some time and so that we don't, we don't wanna overlap them certainly. But if it's not gonna be used, for example, this summer, if Gerora doesn't wanna occupy it until maybe two thousand and twelve or maybe even two thousand and thirteen, then leaving that space vacant, uh, you know, there'd be opportunities perhaps to, for a short-term lease of the property to, for other activities and, and other things that we might be interested in doing.
You've discussed this with them, uh, with Ron?
Yeah, fully.
Uh, what about the bathroom situation that, uh, you'd mentioned to me on Monday when the finance committee met with you that, uh, was it Monday?
Friday.
Friday.
Thursday.
Yeah.
Thursday morning.
Okay, last week. That you would use possibly HUD money to do some connections of sewer line connections and everything to make life a little bit easier for Gerora and-
Well, any small business money that's available right now, uh, through any of the organizations, Vadic, Bebo, uh, HUD, uh, Department of Commerce, anything that could possibly help renovate some of the spaces or do some work, uh, in the areas down there, that would be business-oriented, you know, that's a, that's an opportunity for a grant.
That would, that would help the-
That may help, uh, Gerora in the end if that's in the space that they're, if there's some renovation money for the business. Problem with that is you get into, again, you make expenditures by the business, you wanna recoup that investment. Can you do it in a year? You know, don't know, that's the-
A lot of those dollars are tied to job creation, I mean, you have to be able to show a certain amount of job creation.
Full-time job creation.
Just like Main Street grants, okay? A lot of those dollars are tied to the job creation and, and that sort of thing. And don't know that Gerora in and of itself qualifies for that.
Right, it's a nonprofit.
But if you're doing a bathroom, uh, back-to-back, uh, uh, the lines, sewer lines and things, you need, you're gonna have to improve sewer lines out there, is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so it could all benefit everybody?
Yes, I think that's the goal, is to try to find, put together partnerships out there that generate more tourism, more money, more dollars for all the various groups that are wanting to utilize.
They have yet to tell you yain or nay, right? Even though we did it, I know we passed it.
You recall when they made that presentation, if, if I am not mistaken, they indicated, I mean, David indicated and, and the group indicated that their first priority even at that was going to be the interpretive center, which was the outside piece, that not as much the building as, as that because they talked about having to have a fundraising campaign and that sort of thing. that sort of thing.
Okay. Members of the council?
Motion to approve a concessionary policy for Catawba Meadows.
Second. Motion second?
Who's second?
John.
John. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. Consideration of modification of financing agreement and deed of trust with the Branch Banking and Trust. Sally?
This is very much a happy. You'll recall that currently, City Hall, the two condominium units that we own, Units Two and Unit Three, are financed by BBNT. And we financed those in 2007, and at that time, we did it for a 15-year term. Recently, Karen was attending a meeting and heard some folks talking about looking at some of their existing longer-term financings and opportunities to save money. She came back, called BBNT, and Louis Lloyd, who we have worked with for years, who handles their governmental finance section, said, "Sure, let me tell you what I can find out." Long story short, we are currently financed at 3.93%. He has offered through a one-time modification, which doesn't require new closing costs, and all kinds of attorneys, and closing fees, to lower that rate to 3.49%. That would not change the ultimate term, which is a payout in 2022, but it would change the interest rate and save us $68,348 on the payback for City Hall.
Fantastic. Thank you, Karen. Did a great job. Make a motion to adopt a resolution approving terms of refinancing and authorizing the mayor and/or city manager to execute and issue a modification agreement between the City of Morganton and Branch Banking and Trust dated April 14, 2011, or such conforming date and amendments as may be required by BBNT.
Second.
Have a motion. Have a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to see it at 1%, as opposed to being less than a high percent.
You're just getting greedy, Forrest.
Getting greedy.
Well, I'm trying to save money.
I'd like to see our investment income at 1% myself, instead of .000005.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of 30-day notice of boards and commissions. Sally?
Forrest, if you find a 1% loan, I'd like to know that, because I've got some house refinancing I'd like to do.
Well, I'm looking.
June is Appointment Month, and so you have a long list of 30-day notices for boards and commissions that have appointments coming up for the June meeting. Human Relations Commission, the Fireman Supplemental Retirement Fund, Community Appearance, Cable Television, Planning and Zoning, the Recreation Advisory Board, the Main Street Advisory Board, and Burke Development, Inc.
Kelly, get hold of everybody as soon as you can, and you want them in here at least three weeks before next council, okay? Their recommendations.
But by the same token, Mayor, shouldn't we make this list available through the News Herald? There may be some citizens out there that aren't aware.
Don't we normally do something like that?
I don't know, but I think-
Periodically, we do, just asking for folks that could be interested basically in a specific board, or any board.
We used to have a list. I don't know if we still do. We had a list.
It's very old.
Oldest.
Need to update it, is what I'm saying.
I think with our award-winning PIO officer and a new man at the News Herald, it should get done, correct?
Post haste. Okay. We don't have to make a motion on that, but we would like to have some information out to the public on that. And is there anything from any of the, the city manager, or any of the city council members? Thank everyone for being here tonight. I'll adjourn the meeting.